Both our Board President and Vice President are unavailable for tonight's meeting. As I, as the Board Secretary, will be presiding in accordance with the Board Policy. The Policy provides that in the absence, disability, or disqualification of the President and Vice President, the Secretary shall preside. This ensures that all actions taken during this meeting are legal and binding. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I have no additions or corrections. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there support? Okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes: A) the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five board meeting minutes; B) payment of invoices; C) second reading and adoption of the Neola policies; I) rescind Policy twenty-two sixty-four, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities; two, I guess it's two, sorry, technical correction policy twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or discussion with the Board? Okay. Hearing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Sorry, I should've said aye. New to this, guys, have a little patience with me tonight. All right, highlights.
Would you mind hitting the two right in front of you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Great, thank you.
Oh, you already have one set up?
Our first presenter is Dr. Souch.
I will leave it set up and just move it.
Okay, good evening. I have the first couple highlights, which we have a meeting full of highlights this morning. This evening, sorry. That's... Stay went fast. So I'm going to start with presenting my goals, which are really the district's goals, which are all based on our strategic plan that took into account all of our stakeholder voices. So a lot of these are building on what was started last year. So the goals themselves remain the same. However, the action steps, depending on where we are at in each of our strategic planning areas, are a little bit different there than we were last year. So the first goal is based on our first focus area, which is in the area of teaching, learning, and programming. And why is it not?
Do I need to do something here?
Nope, not, not on you. It's what we have geared for. Because as I say, technology's great until you get in front of a bunch of people and that's when it doesn't work. Or I should say, the person operating it doesn't work. Okay. Okay, so back to Goal One, which is based on our first area of the strategic plan, which is teaching, learning, and programming. So the goal is that I will work with our EPS leadership team and the Board of Education to recruit, hire, and retain dedicated staff, which we get to hire a few more of those wonderful people tonight. While also evaluating and expanding curricular and non-curricular opportunities that create a learning environment, which leads to increased student proficiency supported by professional development. So I'm not going to read all of these, but I'll highlight some of them on how we are going to achieve this goal. We are going to be working through our strategic planning group of the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee, working on moving forward with our next curricular cycle, finishing up our one from last year with social studies, moving into some ELA this year, working with our leadership team and school teams on our annual school improvement meeting, also working on, with staff groups, on reviewing and updating recognition activities. So we're always looking for different ways that we can celebrate our awesome eddy staff. Looking at different ways we can recruit some new staff when we do have retirement, so working to really foster and grow those relationships with a number of our higher ed institutions near us to get some good student teachers, because that's a great way to have a very long interview process with us to make sure that we have individuals that will be a great fit. And with that, continuing to grow our relationships that we have with different alternative programs, such as Talent Together, we have a few really great educators who are in those programs right now. Those are the programs that, when you're walking through our schools and you're around that person, you're like, this person is a natural teacher, they just don't have the credentials. And these are different ways that we can get those credentials. Continuing our meetings with the union through this year is not a negotiating year with our teaching staff, it is with some of our other groups, but really having those contract maintenance meetings so we can keep a good relationship and address any concerns before they become bigger concerns. And then continuing to seek out quality professional development that goes with our horizontal and vertical alignment, with our late starts, and then our PD days that we're focusing on that. So I won't go how we're going to measure it. I know the Board has been provided with this, and this is how I will present the Board with the evidence of us moving forward on Goal Number One. Goal Number Two, which is in the area of community and communication, and this is where I'll work with the district to increase communication and build relationships with both internal and external stakeholders, as well as the Board of Education, and find meaningful ways to gather and use stakeholder input. So again, this is working through our very active communication and community Subcommittee Group of the Strategic Plan, working to create additional advisory groups. This year, one of my focuses is really to find a good way to connect and get that student voice to continue to come through. I have a couple of different ideas that I'll be talking to our leadership team about being able to do that. A number of our principals already do that really well, on getting that student voice. I will be implementing a third-party survey for perception data in the spring, which is run through a different ISD to give some additional feedback. Working with the leadership team and the Board on really creating a strong communication plan. So now that we're having some more of those tools in place through our new website and our new communication app, really narrowing down what a communication plan looks like, so there's no confusion on where to go to get what information. Working with our Technology Department and Buildings to increase information on our new website, and then working with the leadership team and staff to offer additional learning opportunities for families. So I know I've gotten some feedback already on some different topics that families want to see. I know we tried some through the Parent University last year. Actually, walking through open house, had a couple of parents who were half kidding, but said, wouldn't it be great if we had some of these at the same place that our kids have practice or out at the sports complex, when I do have someone there with my children and I could come and stop in and learn some things? So looking at those ways to get to families, so they don't feel like they have to come and find us here. And then working with our leadership team and the Board and different stakeholder groups on continuing our rebranding journey this week. I know both Tracy Spalding and I have a meeting again to start seeing what the firm we're working with has come up with some different ideas that then we can share back and get stakeholder input on that. And again, this is the way that I will provide the Board with some evidence on how I will meet Goal Two. And then finally, Goal Three, which is focusing on facilities and funding. I will work with the Board of Education and the District Leadership Team to oversee the utilization of district funds. That includes our bond dollars, any grant dollars, and general fund dollars, while looking to increase funding sources to improve district facilities, infrastructure, and safety, while maintaining the district's overall financial standing. So during my superintendent's report, I will comment a little bit on how the state is not helping us with this goal right now with their lack of a budget, but we're working hard in spite of that. And you'll also hear tonight from Tracy Spalding, who has gone out and been awarded some grant dollars and the wonderful thing she's doing with that at the primary. So ways that we will achieve this goal, again, the Strategic Plan Subcommittee Group, regular meetings with the Boards, Finance, and Building and Ground Subcommittee, our District Safety Team will be meeting regularly this year to continue our work of safety. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've already been doing after the goal presentation. Communication with the community about what we're doing for bond and safety. So we're starting to get more information now that we have the website to be able to push it out that way. Pushing out information through newsletters. And then, once our projects of this first phase of the bond are complete, we're going to have open houses within our buildings so that not only can community members come and see what's done in each building, but other staff members who might not be in all the other buildings will have that opportunity to walk through. Working with our CFO and the Business Office to increase communication with the Board on the district's budget so that the Board is always aware of where we're at in terms of how we're spending the budget that we approved earlier in the summer. Working with the District Leadership Team to implement the recommendations from our safety assessments we had last year. So we had safety assessments done not only on all of our school buildings, but we also had them done on the PAC and then during athletic competitions. So we are now working on, how can we take those recommendations and put them into action? A lot of which we've already been working on with things such as the secure vestibules that are finishing up in each of the buildings, but continuing that work. Working with staff to increase familiarity and comfort with the district's emergency operation plan. Again, we're going to talk about that a little bit, but we had good feedback from the teachers last year that they needed some more time to become comfortable with some of the basics of our emergency operation plan. And so that's where we focused some of our PD prior to school starting this year. The one building, the intermediate, wasn't able to join in because we had some other awesome PD with Orton-Gillingham going on. So their building is getting trained in the SRP that we'll talk about in a minute at our first late start, because again, that has to do with vertical and horizontal alignment. And then, we are going to work to become a heart-safe school this year. Michaela Settle, our school nurse, has done a lot of work in this area. And I'm going to talk about what that means and looks like here in a second. But that is one of our goals this year. The application for that happens in the spring. And then working with District Leadership to create a facilities and grounds review process, similar to our curriculum review process, and we also have one in place for all of our roofs, but looking at how we can add all of our facilities to a plan like that so we can see where are those really high-need areas that will need to be addressed sooner rather than later. And then that also lets our community know what are our true needs of our buildings. And then work to find additional funding sources to help meet those districts' goals, which is always on the mind of probably every district administrator and every district Board member throughout the state of Michigan. Again, these are how I will provide evidence to the Board. And so those are the goals for this year. So very similar to, again, to last year, but that's because of all of the work of the strategic plan. And that's ultimately kind of our blueprint for where we want to head as a district. So any questions on the goals right now? Okay. I'm just, I'm just, I'm going to stand up here because I have the next highlight too.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, so our next one, let me, which one am I on now, TME?
Emergency cardiac response plan.
So one of the things that we needed to do for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is have an emergency cardiac response plan as part of our emergency operation plan. We already had one as part of our plan, but there were some new requirements. Amazingly, it was that the legislature said you didn't really necessarily have to do this, or there wouldn't be oversight on this unless they would fully fund this. And a lot of this has to do with AEDs. And so there's schools out there who don't have the level of AEDs that we have here on campus. So even though the legislature has not funded this, as a school, it is good practice. And so that is why we moved forward and sat down with Michaela Settle, saw what we needed to do to put in place. We're now working with our whole leadership team to have the things in place that we needed to for that new legislation. As part of that, also not required, is to become a Michigan heart-safe school. And looking at what we already have in place, we are very close to that. And with these new requirements and what we're putting into our emergency operation plan, it pretty much covers everything to be a Michigan heart-safe school. So in talking with Michaela Settle, our school nurse, and with our leadership team, we'll be applying for this in the spring. There's a few things that we have to do ahead of time, but those are good practice anyway. So you have to, one of the requirements is that you need to have an AED available where the response time could be about three minutes to get that to a person who's having a cardiac event. And we've proven a couple of times that we're able to do that. So unfortunately, in the last three years, we have had some different individuals who, both at sporting events and even across the street, not even on our schools, campus, have had a cardiac event. The one time, not even here on our campus, Officer SRA was up here at this building. He was able to grab our AED that's here, run across the street, and use that to save someone's life. So we're pretty proud of the amount of AEDs we have throughout our district. And Michaela works hard to make sure they are always up to date, they are tested, all the pads and everything with them are as they should be. We also, she works to train our staff for CPR and then also for emergency first aid. So as part to become a Michigan heart-safe school, you need to have about ten percent of your staff trained. And we're pretty close to that, we're working on getting to that number. And then you also have to meet the requirements from MHSAA for our coaches as well. And John does a nice job making sure that those are in place along with Macy. So both Macy and Michaela act as trainers, or not trainers, as certifiers for being able to teach CPR. So the one other thing that we haven't done in the past that we're going to do this year is to have an actual cardiac drill to go along with all the other drills we have for tornadoes. If you need to have one drill a year for a cardiac response to be able to apply as a Michigan heart-safe school. So we're going to be looking to do that. I'm not showing you the actual cardiac emergency response plan. It has some personal identifiable information in it, but you're able to access that as Board members. All of our staff also will have access to it as well. And then each of the schools will have a CERT team, a cardiac emergency response team, that's made up of about ten percent of their school staff. So we're in the process of getting those in place. Actually, kudos to Mr. Greenwich from the ALC. He was our first one to give us our team for that, for his building. And then, once we have that in place, that's just one more thing that we have to do to apply for this. So any questions on that quick overview? I'll come back around when we're actually applying for it. Okay, well, I'll stay up here for my last but not least. And this one, I'm pretty excited about, because I think, as you are as well, maybe excited's not the right word, but school safety is a passion of mine, as I know it is with all of you as well. And we, when we redid our emergency operation plan last year, we had already put the standard response protocol into our emergency operation plan. Since then, the state of Michigan has said that beginning with next school year, so the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, districts throughout the state of Michigan will be required to have the standard response protocol in place. So we kind of saw the writing on the wall. A number of the District Safety Team members, through attending some of the safety academies throughout the state, put on by the Michigan Office for School Safety, as long as the, along with the Michigan State Police, the I Love You Guys Foundation presented at each one of those, which is where the standard response protocol comes from. The materials are free, it does not cost the district anything to implement this, and it's being implemented nationwide, and not just in schools. So I know I have gone into some churches, actually, across the border in Indiana, and have seen the SRP posted there. They're also working with a number of hospitals and different medical facilities to use this as well. And we had the opportunity this summer, working with Brandywine, reached out and said that they were going to have a train-the-trainer model to be able to train staff in this. And while it's pretty straightforward and you don't necessarily need the training, we thought, you know, that would be a great way, especially, we're right across the border, we share students too, to participate. And so our District Safety Team, along with a couple additional administrators, so that we could have at least a trainer in every building, attended this, trained the trainers, and went through it. And it was very helpful. And then we came back before school started as part of the PD and trained in each of the buildings, again, outside of the intermediate. We also met with our Transportation Department, and will continue to work to make sure that every staff member is trained in the SRP across the district. The information has also been shared out with families so that they are aware, and then we're sharing it out with students as well, too. Another great part about the I Love You Guys Foundation is they do actually seek out input from educators, along with law enforcement, so that their materials are made with the student in mind, so that it's simple. And they actually have a separate K-two training on what language to use with little ones, because we know that our little ones need different language than our high schoolers do. But it's pretty simple, and I know, both as parents and as Board members, you have seen this before. But instead of, if any of you remember back in the day, I know when I was first teaching, we had code words that would be something like, "The eagle has landed", and that was supposed to mean that you needed to go get into a lockdown. Well, if you were a volunteer or a parent in a building and you hear the eagles landed, you have no idea what to do, you're just standing there. And had that been a real emergency, that would be hard to keep yourself safe or keep any of the students around you safe. So these are all very straightforward, they're very simple. They say do not change them, because the idea is that everyone, including law enforcement, knows the same terminology. And they're said over the announcements three times, and they give you a direction. So the different ones are hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. And a hold is for something that is happening outside of the building. So I know in our training, we've talked about that, for some reason, being here on the border, we end up with a lot of police chases in the area. And so we'll hear from Officer SRA or the Ontua Township Police Department, like, hey, there's a police chase, it's heading in this direction from Elk Heart. You would want to put your buildings on a hold. Or sorry, I meant secure, so now I'm mixing them up. But, so hold is something simple in the building. So you have a student who throws up in the hallway, and you need to keep everybody in their classrooms. You would institute a hold. We had an example of a staff member a couple of years ago who had not life-threatening, but a medical emergency in the classroom. We needed to clear the students out of the classroom, which we did, but we didn't think about passing time coming up. Had we had this language in place, we would have put the building on a hold. That way, students weren't walking by, wondering what's going on, and then spreading a story that wasn't entirely accurate by the end of the day. So a hold can be anything going on that you just need to secure a part of the building. It's low-level. So you have our little ones who might need to use the restroom during that time. They could call the office and say, hey, I'm down, you know, in the young five classroom, so-and-so needs to use the restroom. And if the reason for the hold is down at the library, Mrs. Spalding could say, yep, that's great. We'll have someone come down and escort, you know, little Johnny to the restroom for that. So a hold is low-level. Secure is what, when there's something happening outside of the building, so example of police chase. And secure means no one in, no one out at the start of that. Now, that could be frustrating as a parent. You've scheduled an orthodontist appointment, you come to get your student, and we'll have a sign on the door that says, no one in, no one out. And really, that's done to make sure everyone's safe, because this means something is happening outside of the building that might come towards the building. So we heard a great example during our training that it was pickup time, and you know, just like out here, when you're in line to pick up a student, everyone's been waiting there, some people for a couple of hours. And it's right when the bell is going to ring, and they hear of a bank robbery nearby. And so the principal makes the call to put the building in secure mode, no one in, no one out. That means no one is getting released to their parents right outside. Now, that could mean that some parents are like, I am right here, I can take my student, they will be safe. But come to find out, because of the traffic backup with having pickup, where was the bank robber, robber? Stuck in the pickup line. So then, when you have the squad cars coming surround the car, guns drawn, now parents can understand, okay, this was to keep my kids safe. I wouldn't want them out here witnessing this right now. Now, if we hear that the police chase was coming this way, and now it's turned back away and is going in the opposite direction, then we can move in the secure mode from a no-one-in, no-one-out to a controlled release. So now you're coming for an orthodontist appointment, we can check your ID, we can make sure you're the person who's supposed to pick up the child. Or if we have a milk delivery and we don't want to hold that up for the rest of the county, we can say, okay, yep, we know who you are, we know you were supposed to be here at this time, we can escort you in to make that delivery. So secure is still, it could transition into something more serious, but a lot of times, it's just to keep everyone inside the building and safe. So inside the building, building, like, operations as usual. The only students who might notice a difference are those who were going to have outside recess, are now going to have indoor recess. Or if you have a student who's returning from the Career Center, we might call the Career Center and say, hey, hold our kids, we're in a secure mode right now. Lockdown is the most, is the highest level of security. And that's where, when we call a lockdown, all doors are locked, everybody is out of sight. And you cannot release a lockdown over the intercom. An administrator in law enforcement would need to come through and open every door. And we will be practicing that as part of our drills, so that everyone is used to how this is going to go. So lockdowns would, they're much more serious, they take more time. But that's because there's an immediate threat that's in the building. So that's what a lockdown is used for. And you might start with a secure, you might move into a lockdown, depending what's going on. Evacuate, evacuate could be at the, you know, you've determined that you're coming out of a lockdown, you need to leave the building, and there's different levels of evacuate as well to, for being able to exit the building, go to any of our rally points. And then shelter are your typical, your tornado drills and things like that that are weather-related. So all of these can, you can go back and forth between many of them. The lockdown is the one, though, that requires a whole nother level of security. So all of this information, you can go onto the I Love You Guys website, it is there. We also keep sharing it out in all of our newsletters. And then we do have a trainer in each of the buildings. Once we're comfortable with our, the standard response protocol, where Alice, that we talked about through Parent University last year, still fits into this. And that's just within a lockdown. For example, if it's passing time, Alice allows that teacher and older student to make those decisions on how to how to keep themselves safe if they have to. If you're stuck in a hallway and you can't get behind a locked door and you can see that you can leave the building and head towards safety, that's what we would want you to do. So that's how Alice fits in to this protocol. And then, um, we're going to also be, uh, getting trained later on after we're comfortable with this, with the standard reunification process, uh, which is very similar to how, um, we handled it last year when we had the fire at Eagle Lake and needed to have reunification. This is very similar. There's just some things that are able to streamline. And again, make it more common, make it where everyone's on the same page. So not only school staff, but families and law enforcement all know, um, what to expect. So any questions on that? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Suge. Now we will call up Mrs. Katie Barhite from the Boosters. Athletic Boosters. I should have, I should have clarified that. Sorry about that, Katie.
Which one am I plugging? Don't start my timer. Thank you. Perfect. Okay. Thank you, board. Thank you, everyone, for giving us a couple of minutes to do some highlights on the Athletic Boosters. I'm Katie Barhite. I'm the new president of Athletic Boosters as of June twenty twenty-five. We did recent elections and our positions will be, um, valid for two years unless someone steps down or resigns for personal reasons or for other reasons. We've had some parents leave because their kids have graduated. So, um, sometimes there's some natural turnover. But I would like to have my board members introduce themselves.
Hi there, everyone. I'm Suzanne Cunningham, and I am, uh, newly as well for VP. Formerly, I did fundraising and, um, social media. And so, yeah, glad to be here.
I'm Annette Dittenberg, and I am the secretary, new to the position as well, so.
Yes, and, oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. And we had some new, um, some other new faces. So Ms. Buffy's been around for a while, but she is now vice president. She's in charge of spirit wear. I don't even think I could say her last name, so everybody just calls her Ms. Buffy. Um, Don Day is our new treasurer, and he has two kiddos at the high school. Um, Brad is our outgoing president, but he is now a board member and in charge of concessions. We also have gotten some new board members with both Lombardi's. Tammy is a remaining board member. We have Dina. And then we also have Lori Day, who's also a board member, which is Don's wife. So just new faces, but also some familiar faces. Um, I'm going to quickly summarize our mission statement, because I don't want to read all of this. And also, I found a little, uh, error, where it's supposed to say character. It says care- carrot shushed. I'm not really sure with that. But I made a mistake. So, um, but basically, the Edwardsburg Boosters are volunteers. And we are here to help support, uh, students, student athletes, teams, coaches, the athletic director. Families, um, have a wonderful athletic experience, um, at Edwardsburg. And we hope to support them both financially, um, with whatever needs they may need. So we have requests all of the time. Um, but it just says, like, it says cultivating clean wholesome school spirit, promoting good sportsmanship, and developing high ideals of character. So, um, that is a little bit. And then we also are modifying our mission statement, because before it said to provide supplementary, supplementary financial support for all Edwardsburg athletic programs, grade seven through twelve. But now we do have sixth grade athletics. So we're going to modify our mission statement to include sixth grade. So some of the things that we have been able to contribute, um, recently that we're super proud of, um, like you were speaking about the heart, um, safe schools. We purchased three AEDs in twenty twenty-four, so Brad is super proud of that. And, um, those are outside at the athletic fields. Uh, we, another thing that we do every year that we, uh, really enjoy doing and that we're super proud of are the senior banners. We think those look amazing, um, when they were around town, but now they're, they're on campus. That's something that we do for our seniors for like supporting them and loving them and thanking them for their time that they've given to athletics, but also then as a gift to the parents too, um, for their support of the athletics program. Uh, our two biggest expenses are athletic trainer Macy. Everybody knows Macy. Uh, it is around twenty-seven thousand dollars a year that we are trying to raise to help, uh, support Pay for Macy, which is our biggest expenditure. And then the other is Huddle, which is an online software for game footage and student highlights. That is about eleven thousand dollars a year. So that is not, that's some equipment costs, but mostly that's just to run the software in the program. We're still learning how to do that to full capacity, but we're, it's a, it's a work in progress, I feel. Um, some of the other things that we've been recently unable to do was, um, Suzanne ran a great, uh, program, trying to get our athletes up to McBane, uh, on that first game there. Um, and the coach had said, "Hey, you know, we don't really want to take a school bus on a three-hour trip." Uh, and so she was out, she was able to help, uh, if you want to talk about that, I don't know if you want to talk about it more, what you were able to do, but boosters didn't actually fund it at all. We just helped with the drive for the money. She was able to work with the business and the partnership, um, to come up with a contract. And, uh, we were able to actually, the parents contributed all the money. We were just able to be that, um, kind of the communicator. And also, we helped collect the funds since we are, you know, a volunteer organization, um, and a charitable organization. And so that was something we recently did. Um, and then something we've been asked to do recently is to help update the middle school scoreboards, which we're really excited to help with. Um, again, helping to, um, maintain but also improve our facilities for our athletes and our coaches. Um, and then again, one of the reasons I joined Boosters personally was so that there are no obstacles to a student becoming, um, an athlete, like any financial reason. Um, every kid should be able to participate. And so, uh, if there's a kid that needs something, a warm-up, anything, we were able to provide some practice shirts for kids this year's, wh- this year, whatever they may need, we will help meet that need, so that there's no obstacles for them to be able to participate. So, uh, Don created us a new website, speaking of rebranding. Um, Suzanne and I think, uh, Dr. Suge came up with like the It Starts Here last year. So we've got stickers and that's our new kind of logo, um, to try to do some more, uh, like, raising funds for some of our goals that I'll go over here in a minute. Um, but Don was able to create us a new website, which hopefully we will soon partner with Eddie's Athletics to be able to have the athletic events on it. Um, you can volunteer here through this website or donate, uh, towards Boosters. So this is our new website, eddysboosters.org. Uh, this is just a little rough, uh, look at our budget. I just go over this because depending on how many home football games we have, it does in- impact our income. So, uh, just to give an example, we raised, uh, just under six thousand dollars last Thursday, but that was with a JV, a varsity football, uh, three volleyball games and a tennis match. So we had quite a bit of people there for Thursday night. Um, but that was just our first game. And then we also have one this coming Friday, which, uh, we do the grill, which we've increased the prices slightly on those, just because of, uh, the prices that have raised for some of our products. But, um, anytime you guys buy from those, it goes directly back to Boosters. Um, and then our spirit wear, I know Ms. Buffy does a great job. We push some of the team's spirit wear a lot, but that's because its tops also gives back to the boosters, um, on every item that's sold. So that's another way that we raise funds. Um, and then some of our expenses, like we talked about, the athletics breakdown. Uh, he has the trainer here for twenty-one thousand dollars last year. It was slightly more than that. Um, the software at eleven thousand five hundred, and then sports in general was seventy-five hundred. Sometimes there's asks from coaches. And so we take a vote as a board, and then we decide to spend our money on that. Um, so that's just a little rough breakdown. And then our biggest thing would be the It Starts Here campaign. I don't know. I'm probably running out of time, but I'll go through this quickly. Um, this is something we started last year, because the board graciously let us start, um, obtaining sponsorships, uh, so that we could partner with local businesses and, and actually, there's a lot of student families that participate, um, that want to support the athletics and they weren't sure how. So we are the avenue to make that happen, because we have some big goals here, and so that's what we're working towards. Um, we have four phases that aren't necessarily like in order, uh, chronological order. Um, we're just working towards these goals. So if we had a sponsor come up to us and say, "Hey, I would like to do this phase," or "I would like to work on the soccer lights," it does not have to go in any type of chronological or numerical order. It's just kind of how we phrased it here. So, um, we have our four asks. So the first one is the strength and conditioning room. We have a great video that we have posted on our website for anyone to see, um, about some of the updates. We'd like to do the strength and conditioning room. Um, that is our first, uh, phase. The second would be a branded transport vehicle, so something smaller that some of our athletes and maybe individual students could use, like if they're going to the Spelling Bee or they're going somewhere, it would be a smaller branded vehicle that we would be able to use as a district. So that's another ask that we have, that we've just been talking to members of the community about. The third would be soccer lights and an updated facility for our soccer fields. As we know, it gets dark early. We have late soccer games. We want to be able to have a facility that we could have evening games or a place where a band could practice, maybe if there was conflicting events on the football field. So just being able to have a second place, um, for some of our students and student athletes to, to practice or have games. And then the lofty goal is the field house. So everyone kind of in the area is building these amazing field houses where athletes and also students and some classes are going. Elkheart just finished one where they also have gym classes and yoga classes, and teachers are able to use, um, some of the equipment. Uh, so there's, there's ways that you can work, um, as a team to kind of make these things happen, but that is the biggest loftiest goal would be trying to find someone to hopefully sponsor a field house. But those are just things that we talk about as a group. And so this is one of the depictions of the hopefully new updated weight room, um, Eddie's everything. And, uh, new equipment. Some of the equipment has seen better days. Uh, there would need to be new flooring and just some new things that happened. But again, it wouldn't just be for athletes. It would also be for students. There are strength and conditioning classes in there. There's advanced lifetime fitness class. There's freshman PE. So there's lots of things that use this space. So that was the strength and conditioning room. Um, the cost that we had gotten quoted, I believe this was what, this was Brad, when Brad was on, was around two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we had wanted to raise this in the first year. We've gotten about fifteen thousand dollars raised. So we're not moving very quickly here, but we're still trying to build relationships. And hopefully, when we do a proposal, we're going to do a really detailed proposal soon, that we would be able to ask for some community grants. Culver's, um, the fast food restaurant just did Penn's Weight Room. So there's opportunities out there. We just need to do a bit of a more, uh, deep dive into our proposal. And another picture of what the weight room could look like. And then we talked about the transport van, the soccer lights and the updated facilities there. Um, again, the cost that we had estimated was two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We had hoped that that would be done with, within two and two and a half years. And then, that's just a picture of what we'd like on the bottom versus what we have, just the lights. And then the field house, which is dollar signs. We didn't even have, it's just a very lofty goal, that if we thought we had something and someone said, "Hey, we'd like to do something big," you know, that was, that was our idea. So that is, those are our four phases. Um, yeah, we talked about the designated wrestling space, softball and baseball training facility. Right now, they're renting spaces in the winter to be able to rent, um, or to be able to like do drills and different practices in the winter, and then, um, community events. So like, you could have dances there. You could have parent nights. You could do all kinds of things there. So it's just, again, a lofty goal that we're working towards. So, and we have partnership stuff, so that's what we got. Do you guys have anything you want to share so far?
You did awesome.
You did great.
Okay. Was that less than five minutes, I hope? Okay. Yes, and we have the new website. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that maybe onto our website and then out on Facebook too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Athletic Boosters. We appreciate it. And next up is, uh, athletics, uh, with Mr. Paviota, please. Thank you.
Some lights. Uh, thank you for that great presentation. Our, our boosters are truly invaluable to what we do on the athletic side. Um, they do a lot for us, and I really think this team that they have right now, uh, it's in a good place and they're doing some great things. So hopefully, we can keep going strong and continue to build, uh, our athletic boosters. So, uh, I'm here just to give a quick update on our athletics. And so far, so good. Our athletic teams are off to a great start. They're improving every day. Uh, football, boys soccer, volleyball are all in contention for conference championships. Uh, soccer, which is where I was just at, it was very heated. I'm still, my, still pumped up for it. Uh, we ended up with a tie, which keeps us in first place. Um, so we're in sole possession of first place in soccer. So alls we have to do is continue to win. Um, they can lock that up. Volleyball is undefeated. Um, but looking at our fall participation numbers, we have boys, we have a hundred and fifty-eight boys participating in athletics, which is about thirty-seven percent of our male population. Uh, for the girls, we have eighty-three girls, which is twenty-three percent of the female population. And overall, we have two hundred and forty-one uh, student athletes in our building of, uh, seven hundred and eighty-seven. So thirty-one percent of our kids, so about a third of our kids are participating in fall athletics, which is great. So, uh, quick rundown, team by team, uh, boys and girls cross-country. Our boys are ranked thirteenth in Division Two per MCHSA. Um, Georgia Babcock, uh, broke the school record for the girls. For cross-country, she ran a eighteen fifty-three. And George Scupham's very, very close to the boys' record, and hopefully, he can get that by the end of the year. But just, uh, taking a look, an overall look at what our, our cross-country coaches are doing with our kids. Many of the boys and girls have set personal records this year and added their names to the top twenty lists of all-time, um, all-time records for, uh, Edwardsburg. Our football team started three and O. They were ranked number eight in Division Four. Um, they're battling a lot of injuries currently, and we're still trying to get healthy. They lost their last game, so they're now three and one, which still has them in contention for the conference. Uh, girls golf, currently fifth place in the conference. Jada Godeski is fifth individually. Uh, Grace Peak is fifteenth individually, and, um, a shout-out to Jada for breaking the school eighteen-hole scoring record with a score of eighty. Uh, boys soccer, having a great season. Had a little hiccup tonight, but we were able to get back. Uh, we were down two-one, tied it with four minutes left, but they're, uh, ten-one and one, um, three-oh and one in the conference. And they're not ranked at this time, but I think they definitely should be. Um, but they're still in first place in the conference. Boys tennis, boys tennis is improving every day. They're battling, uh, they're grinding out every match that they can. We have the number two, um, seeded players with our number one singles and our number two singles. Our number one single lost his first conference match tonight, uh, Adam Redden. Um, and Logan Summy has only one loss in the conference as well. So both of those two are uh, going to be s- two seeds going into the conference tournament. And volleyball, currently undefeated in conference play. Uh, they've been ranked as high as number six in Division Two. Uh, they won the Gold Lake Tournament early in the year, which I think carried a lot of momentum for them. Um, so, and that was the first time they've ever won that in school history. There's a lot of good teams there. Uh, but hopefully, they can keep that momentum rolling. And if you were at the football game, we honored four of our track athletes at halftime, uh, one for three records broken last year in track. And then we honored, um, three athletes who earned state, all-state honors. And, uh, something new that I, that I've tried, and um, it's definitely interesting trying to figure it out and, and work through it. But I recorded a weekly AD message to our students and posted it to the site. So, um, if you go to our site, you can click on it, and you get to see me talking to our Eddy athletes, just trying to incorporate, uh, pride, passion, purpose, uh, into athletics. And, uh, you know, just carry on that tradition of our, of our school, of having pride, passion, and purpose. So, um, our athletes are working hard. They're competing in the classroom. They're respective sports, and I just want to wish them continued success. And that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Up next is a spotlight on education, Mrs. Erin Suchek.
And Mrs. Thanelle.
Uh, good evening. I'm Erin Suchek, and I'm the vice president of the EEA, and this evening, it is my pleasure to shine the spotlight on Patty Thanelle. Mrs. Thanelle is our media specialist librarian for the entire district. She works in all five buildings, and she is the only one in the district who works in all five buildings. This makes her, in my opinion, superwoman. Uh, she began teaching here at EPS in nineteen ninety-eight, and when I asked her what she thought about her role, she says that she loves seeing the growth in our students from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade. She says books are unique in that they compete curiosity and also drive students to learn more and do more as they grow. She loves working with all different age groups. With the littles, she loves seeing the joy in their eyes when they get to check out a book for the first time to take it home with her, with them. For the first graders, she loves helping them find books that they actually want to read for the first time. And as students age, Mrs. Thanelle's role changes in helping them with research, finding books that are similar to a beloved series, even developing projects using technology. She really is the teacher's teacher. Mrs. Becky Wright, who I work with, uh, works very closely with Mrs. Thanelle at the middle school for the Honors English Program. And Mrs. Wright said that regardless of her crazy requests, Mrs. Thanelle has never said no. Uh, she's helped the Honors students with their give-back projects, where students have researched books that are similar to their favorite genres and created a catalog of those books. She has also housed their civil rights projects, so that they could create a museum of their research and presentations. For myself, Mrs. Thanelle comes to me frequently with new resources that I can use in history to make it more alive and more exciting for my students. For myself, Mrs. Thanelle comes to me frequently with new resources that I can use in history to make it more alive and more exciting for my students. She is excited when we as teachers push her to be her best and challenge her brain. Our schools that would not function without Mrs. Thanelle. She is a bright, friendly light who inspires our students and our teachers. And it is my pleasure to put her in the spotlight this evening.
Thank you. Next up is the primary school grant award, Mrs. Tracy Spalding.
So I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about my crazy brain and thank Dr. Suits for letting me apply for grants. That could be a little bit on the wacky side. So in the spring, I applied for a Heart of Cook grant. And it's funded through the DC Cook Nuclear Plant in Bridgman. Um, it's um administered through the Bering Community Foundation. Um, to apply, you need to be in Bering County, Cass County, or Northwest Indiana. Um, the grants are available for education, human services, or environmental projects. So when I went, it was really interesting to see the different variety of people that were getting grants. There were fire departments there. There were fire departments. They're getting AED devices. There were street ministries. There were education projects. There were key clubs there. So it was a wide variety of um grant organization or grant participants getting awards. Um, the nuclear plant employees review the applications and they select the award winners. Um, and they do prioritize grants that are supported by grant or by Cook employees. Um, our grant was supported by Brian Wagner. He's a security officer at the plant and he's a primary parent. He has a first grader in our building. And then Jason Spalding, he is also a security officer at the plant. And he's, he happens to be my husband. Said, you're going to say yes to this grant, honey. And so um, grant ranges can be anywhere from five hundred to ten thousand dollars. So I applied for a loose parts grant. And if you don't know what loose parts are. It's um outdoor play with a wide variety of things. It could be anything from natural materials such as sticks and rocks. And um, sticks, rocks, dirt, um, or it can be manufactured things. Um, such as PVC pipes, two-by-fours, tires, um, a wide variety of things. And when you look at our playground, we have a beautiful playground. It is great for gross motor activity. We have a beautiful field where the children run around and tackle each other and they play soccer and play tag and try not to hit each other. But what loose parts does is it's that creative piece that we're missing in our children. I think back to my childhood and out in the country, we had this old dump. And my cousins and I would go out there and we would dig out hubcaps and much to my grandma's demise. We would drag out the old box spring and we would drag out all these old pieces of junk. And we would build and we would create and we would roll things down the hill and we would do stuff. But when we were done, we had to drag it back to the dump. But we were using our minds and we were being creative and we didn't have anyone telling us what we had to do with those things. And our children today are missing that. And that's where loose parts comes in. So we're, with the money from the Heart of Cook grant, I received forty-seven hundred dollars from them and that was to buy a shed. And that sounds kind of funny. I'm buying a shed for my playground. Um, but then there was a secondary grant through the um EPS foundation. Um, they're um funding the materials for within the shed because they do need shelving in there. I do need crates and stuff. And I want to be able to go to Lowe's and be strategic and buy some PVC pipes, buy some joints and connectors. And some ping pong balls and some tennis balls. And I want to go on Amazon and order some plastic rocks. Not that I don't trust my K-one kids with real rocks, but there are windows near, nearby. But what loose parts does is it's child direct, child directive imaginative play. There will be adults out there, but they're not telling them what to do with these materials. And so this is giving children the opportunity to play with random materials and there's no right way to play with it. It's all children-led play with random material on the playground that they might not ever play with. Um, and it's, so it's going to support their cognitive development, their social development. Because they may be working with peers that they've never worked with before. Um, skill building, you know, you might take a couple two-by-fours and a milk crate and make a New Balance beam out there on the playground. We don't know what they're going to do with it. It's all up to their imagination to come up with what they do with it. So you might drive by and it might look like a bunch of garbage out on the playground one afternoon, but it really isn't. It's all loose parts play with our K-one kiddos. So I'm looking forward to it. Once we get it up and running, we will take pictures and we'll bring it back and show you. And we might have some kids come talk to you about it. Um, I had to tell you a funny story with it. My neighbor was getting rid of four tires. He had a yard sale. And I walked over and I was like, oh, gosh, Dave, those would be great at my yards or at my loose parts shed. He goes, oh, just take them. You know, go ahead and just take them. So the weekend before school started, I put them out back behind our library. And that Monday morning, Brant sends a hot message. I can't believe it. Somebody dumped tires out behind the building. I had to admit, it was me. I dumped the tires behind the building, but they're for our sheds. So. Thank you for your time and we look forward to having loose parts play at the primary.
Thank you, Mrs. Spalding. Congratulations. Moving on to items of business, uh, personnel. We will vote for all personnel in one motion at the end of the recommendations. We will start with high school, with the high school, Mr. Ryan Markle.
Good evening. Great to see all of you tonight. Uh, as the summer was winding down, I was meeting with a colleague that's a principal at another school boasting about how we had all our hiring done. And uh, that very same week, I had one resignation that was retiring and one that was going to the mission field. So fortunately and unfortunately, at the same time, I had to make some hires and we're very blessed, uh, the two people that we were able to find to fill those positions. Uh, the first one, the high school guidance counselor in her free time, has to be an athletic booster. She's also uh going to be our, one of our high school counselors. And uh, we're extremely excited to have Katie on board and what she's done. She's a graduate of IU. Um, she's got both her masters and a degree in psychology there. Um, and has just done a great job, um, kind of diving in. She had already started at Elkhart. Uh, we kind of poached her and brought her over and uh, she's just done a fabulous job. And so we're excited to have her here with us as an Eddy and joining her kids. Cause three of her children are all, all three of her children. And so it's great to have her on board. And so I highly recommend that we, we hire Katie Barhart. Uh, and the other one, the retirement world's kind of been beating me up, but I stole one from retirement. And uh, we had Nathan Elder, who had retired from uh, public schools up in kind of the Thumb area. Uh, his children lived in the Mission Walker area, so they sold their house and they were relocating. And as they were in the process of closing on their house, um, we happened to have a science position. And he has great extensive work, uh, both in the STEM world, um, as well as just in, in public education. And so that was a great hire. Uh, Nate um has went to Bethel University, did his masters at Mary Grove and just has a, a big, big background in STEM education. And so it's been a great blessing to have him on staff. And it uh, can all just worked out great that he was moving down here to be closer to family. Uh, we had a science position at the last minute. And so we're excited. So I highly recommend Nathan Elder and Katrina Barhart as our high school guidance counselor and science teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Markle. Moving on to the middle school, Mr. Josh Born.
Good evening, everybody. So we have another new addition that we'd like to recommend for sixth grade. Um, officially, she's already started. She's been in the building. She has been absolutely everything and more uh of what we assumed when we went through the interview process. So we'd like to recommend Mrs. Jamie Yanorelli. Um, we were able to get her from Elkhart. She has twenty years of experience. Um, born and raised, went through all the Elkhart schools, but had an opportunity to come to Edwardsburg and, and, and came. So um, I don't think she's here tonight. Uh, if you remember the last board meeting that we were in, we, you guys approved Tom Jones. Well, those two talked together for seventeen years. So uh, uh, to have them both in the building i- is, has been phenomenal. So we would strongly recommend um, Mrs. Yanorelli, who earned her bachelor's from Manchester and has a masters from Ball State University. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Born. May I have a motion to approve the hiring of Mrs. Barhite, Mr. Elder and Mrs. Yanorelli? I had to write that down and pronounce it, uh, try to write it in the letters so I didn't mispronounce that last name. That's a little tough, as recommended.
So moved.
Support.
Support. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. All right, motion passes. On behalf of the board, welcome to Edwardsburg Public Schools. Would anyone like to speak at this time? Okay, moving on to reports. We have the superintendent reports first. Go ahead, Dr. Suits.
I feel like I've done a lot of talking, um, but some, some also some exciting things to share in addition. So one um thing that uh, she's not here tonight, but I do want to acknowledge Kerry McGuire will be retiring here in a few days. Um, and before she left, she uh, along with our new assistant superintendent, Ryan Towner, worked on a grant for thirty-five N, which is a literacy grant for the state. It was a competitive grant and so only thirty-nine districts were awarded any funding through this grant and Edwardsburg was one of those districts. So we've been awarded over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that will go towards K-three literacy. Um, that builds on, really the reason I think we were chosen is what our staff have already done under um, the leadership of our administration. And that's that they, we have our staff trained in OG, which is Orton-Gillingham. A number of staff is trained in letters. And we have staff trained in foundations. And I think their dedication to literacy then allowed us to take it one step forward, forward through this grant. So we're really excited to start um, implementing that and working with our staff to continue our focus on literacy here. So a lot of kudos to, to Kerry and Ryan for their work on that and being awarded that grant. Um, again, a, a, a big thank you to Tracy for thinking outside of the box. I know she says wacky, but. Loose parts is something I was very familiar with, um, spending my former years with my office in an early childhood building. And so I got to see that the loose parts actually implemented as part of a curriculum. And it really builds on that idea of STEAM education as well too. And you can give a problem. Um, it's actually fun as an adult to do it too. You're given a problem and you have to just try to figure out how to work with others and solve it. Using anything from cardboard to PVC to whatever you can find. And so it's just not only imaginative, but really builds on those critical thinking skills. So we're excited to start implementing that at the primary as well. And then Eagle Lake, you know, no beginning of the school year is complete unless we have some sort of element that comes into Eagle Lake Elementary. So while it was not fire this year, we did have water. Um, and just the amazing resilience of that staff to not only be coming in after they'd had to wait to get all the new flooring in. And then be willing to pack everything up, share classrooms, share spaces. The library became a classroom over there as well. Um, but they didn't miss a beat. Students got to keep learning. We kept moving forward. We were able to move them back into their classrooms on Friday so that they could start teaching today. But I know just the strain that can put on teaching staff. And so they've just done a tremendous job of handling whatever is thrown at them. So hopefully next year, we have no more elements to go through. I feel like we've hit wind, water, fire. We should be good. Um, I joke about the plague, but people in locust, but I won't joke about that anymore. Um, so that's, those are some of the positive things, even though that wasn't positive, but just how our staff handled it was phenomenal. The same in all of our buildings with um, misplacements because of finishing up bond work. Everyone has just made sure that our Eddys get to keep learning and moving. And I know that takes a lot out of our admin who've had offices moved, some of our staff members who've had their rooms moved. And you just wouldn't know it when we walk through our buildings on what's going on. So those are all the positive things. Unfortunately, I was really hoping that I'd be able to come to this board meeting and say that the state had done what they are legally required to do and have a budget in place. They do not. And um, it's getting a little frustrating, but a couple of weeks ago, I did meet with Representative Kara and spoke with Senator Lindsay at length. And just emphasizing what that means for us here and how we haven't been able to move forward with things we would typically move forward. That we had planned in the budget, we all had to approve back at the, uh, before July one. And so we're just really urging them to, I mean, essentially they have broken the law. They were supposed to have a budget by July one. They still do not. We have prided ourselves here, and I know you guys have worked very hard, that we are a district that keeps our fund balance high, so we don't ever have to borrow to make payroll. This is the first time where uh, Gail Enders and I had to sit down and really look at, okay, what does our cash flow look like? And how long can we go before we have to borrow to make payroll um, through no fault of our own as a district? And so we've worked that out. Um, and we've started to make some calls. So if, if the government shuts down and if we, they still don't have a budget, you know, by the time we're looking at our payrolls into November. Then we'll be coming back to the board next month to, to look for a resolution that we would have to borrow for that, that payroll amount. Which is unfortunate. And I think how we're a district that's in very good financial standing, there are a lot of districts who are not. And so this is really hurting kids across the state. Um, so I will continue to urge them and I urge everyone else to urge them to really sit down, get the work done and get a budget out. Um, and a budget that's good and focused on kids in public schools. Uh, so that's just my little soapbox. I will get off of it now. Um, but we're still doing great work despite all of that. So the kids in classrooms don't know that any of this is going on, but I know it's something that keeps a number of us up at night. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Dr. Suits. Do we have any subcommittee reports? So the only one that I'll add to that is that um, on the Google Drive, um, the notes from the last policy subcommittee meeting have been added. So you guys can take a look at that. Uh, we were going to meet this evening um, to talk about the one thousands, if you will, in our, in our actual um, policies. Uh, to address any concerns anyone had. No one really submitted anything. And then uh, Tony couldn't be here tonight. So uh, we're going to wait and we'll hold our next meeting uh, prior to the, the board meeting next month. So. Um, so go ahead and check out the Google Drive for, for notes there. So I was a guinea pig and hopefully I did them correctly for Cheryl. So. Okay, so moving on to comments from the audience. Do we have any audience members that would like to speak? Please approach the podium and state your name and address. If you have any questions that you'd like to, would like a response to, please provide that information to the recording secretary, which is Cheryl. All comments will be limited to three minutes. The board will not answer any questions at this time. If they have questions or information, the superintendent BOE needs to, Board of Education needs to review or address requests. They provide their name, contact information to Cheryl, and then we will address it after the meeting. Does anyone have any questions or comments from the audience for the board? Yeah? Okay, hearing none? We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?